Meeting of the zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This is kind of an unusual platform, so thanks, everybody, for all of your efforts. And thanks to the city for allowing this to happen and take place. So first up is roll call. Ms. Carlson is here. Mr. Culberson is here. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Raschke is here. Mr. Hirsch is here. And Ms. Kanishi is here. So with that, I will turn it over to Ramona.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This is a board consisting of members that are appointed by our City Commission to serve for a three-year term. All the board members are volunteer members and not city employees. They are charged with hearing and deciding appeals for interpretations of variances to cities' land development regulations. And where literal enforcement of that code would result in an unnecessary or undue hardship, and then they can grant the variance if it's not contrary to public interest. Procedurally, the way the meeting will work today is be a little bit different because we're all appearing virtually, or we'll have applicants calling in. So what we'll be asking the applicants to do, once you're called to present, I'll swear each applicant in individually. And then if there were any additional witnesses to speak for against a particular variance, and somebody's on the phone, then I'll swear that particular witness in. Each applicant, once called, if he could just state your full name, address, and provide a brief description of what you're requesting before the board. For the record, the board will have the opportunity to ask any questions, as well as then open up the discussion to anyone on the phones that may have specific questions or comments. What I would like to do at this time, however, is to go ahead and swear in our staff that will be speaking today before the board. We'll do that at one time, and I think it'll make things a little easier if our staff could raise their right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, great. And then we can go ahead back to Madam Chair. If you can go ahead and call the first case.
All right, first, we have before us the meeting minutes from the March 3 meeting before us. So are there any comments or questions regarding these minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you. All right, the meeting minutes have been approved. So first item of business today is item number six.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe we have to do a roll call vote.
Yes, you're right. I apologize.
Okay. So I guess board members, when you're called upon, if you could unmute your mic to say yea or nay. Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson.
Say that again.
Did you hear me?
Do you approve the meeting minutes?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Culberson.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Raschke.
Mr. Raschke, you have to unmute your phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Say yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Kanishi, yes.
So before we continue with the first case, I think I neglected to mention, one of the items for new business was the appointment of an interim chairperson. But after we had discussed that, my understanding is that you, as vice chair, will go ahead and serve as the chairperson for the next two meetings until we go forward. And then we will elect a chair and a vice chair at the end of our June meeting.
Okay. All right, so first up is item number six. We have Araklis Malis. If I misspelled your name, I apologize. Or mispronounced your name.
Hello.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Malis, I'm gonna need to swear you in.
Mr. Malis, you can turn your webcam on if you have it. There you are. Thank you.
So, Mr. Malis. Oh, Ramona, you're swearing him in.
Yeah, I need to swear. If you can raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Malis is requesting a 1,210-foot variance to allow a new pawn shop approximately 110 feet from the rear property of another pawn shop in lieu of the 13-20 minimum separation distance specified by Table 2.3-1 and Section 2.6 of the Land Development Code on a property located at 515 East Memorial Boulevard. Mr. Malis, can you give us a little bit more information about your request?
Yes. On February 8, 2019, I wanted to apply for a city license to open up a pawn shop. And the lady told me that I basically need to get the state license first. So I went ahead and got my state license. And I basically applied before the changes were made by the city. And now I basically have my state license, I have my county license, and I'm basically only missing my city license to basically open my new business.
Okay. All right. Do we have anything from the city or anyone from the audience who wishes to speak?
Good morning, members of the ZBAA. For the record, this is Todd Vargo with the Community and Economic Development Department. I'm the case planner for this. Next slide, please, Kristel. So the subject property is located at the southwest corner of East Memorial Boulevard and North Vermont Avenue. It's improved with a one-story commercial structure. Next slide, please. It is Zone C2 Highway Commercial. And you can see from these slides that it used to house, the structure used to house a cash advance store and income tax service. This variance is probably unique to any that the ZBAA has heard and probably will hear. And let me explain. So as the applicant stated, he contacted the city's Business Tax Office back in February of 2019 to open up a pawn shop at the site. At the time, pawn shops were permitted uses in the C2 district. Armed with this information, the applicant began the application process for a pawnbroker license from the state of Florida. Unknown to the applicant, sometime in the summer, staff proposed an amendment to the Land Development Code to limit the number of uses such as pawn shops, rent-to-own stores, check-cashing stores, and other similar uses to limit those in a certain area. There, we instituted a minimum separation distance of a quarter mile, which is 1,320 feet between those similar uses. The amendment was approved by the City Commission on November 18, 2019. Next slide, please. In January of this year, when the applicant came back to the Business Tax Office with their approved state pawnbroker license, they were informed of this new ordinance that was passed, the new minimum distance between pawn shops. And as you can see in this slide, and hopefully it's clear, it was a very bright day when I took this. There's an existing value pawn store right across Memorial Boulevard, approximately 110 feet to the northeast. I'm standing in the subject property's parking lot and looking northeast across Memorial there. So the Business Tax Office did not give them, they did not issue them a license for the pawn shop at that time because it didn't meet the minimum code. The applicant came to us in zoning, planning and zoning. We met with them, discussed these unusual circumstances that led to this issue. Next slide, please. Sorry, and you can see there, there's the existing value pawn. There's the 110-foot separation. And on the bottom of the screen is the proposed pawn shop at 5150 East Memorial. Sorry, 5150 East Memorial. So we met with the applicant, discussed these unusual circumstances, and decided that we could support a variance to the minimum distance because the applicant began the process to secure the pawnbroker's license based on the information they received back before that amendment was adopted back in February of 2019. And any questions you might have? Hope to answer them.
Board members, if you have a question, please raise your hand in front of your webcam to be recognized. Okay.
Yes. I have a question. Did you hear from any of the property owners regards to the letter that was sent out, particularly the owner across the street?
I don't, I have not received any communication from any property owners. But good question. So in summary, you know, the applicant inquired about the pawn shop use in good faith prior to pursuing a pawnbroker's license with the state. Unaware that we were about to propose changes to the Land Development Code, we believe the amount of relief requested is the minimal amount necessary to allow for the establishment of the pawn shop use. And due to the unique and special circumstances, we recommend that the request be considered for approval.
Any other comments from the board? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this?
We don't have any calls, Madam Chair. I would make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So let's vote on this. Ms. Carlson?
Aye.
Mr. Culberson?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Raschke?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
And Ms. Kanishi, yes. So it has been approved. So moving on to...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
You too. Thank you as well. Moving on to the next applicant. We have Jack Hall Jr.'s Construction and Aluminum Incorporated requesting nine-and-a-half-foot variance to allow a front yard setback of 5.5 feet in lieu of the 15-foot maximum minimum setback specified by Table 3.4-1 of the Land Development Code in order to construct a carport in the front yard of an existing home on the property located at 1819 Petersburg Avenue. Who do we have with us this morning?
Madam Chair, we have... Oh, sorry. Darren Johnson. Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Johnson. If you could raise your right hand.
Yep.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, can you go ahead and tell us a little bit about your request?
Yes, so I've got a customer, an elderly customer, and he would like a carport on the front of his house. And, yeah, so I'm here for a variance to see if we can accommodate that for him because I don't think there's any property in this area that has one on the front of the house. So this one's gonna be a tougher one for me.
Okay.
I think, let me look at my paperwork. Yeah, I think the house in question, most of these homes have carports built on the side, not on the front. We had tried to get him to reduce the size of it a bit to help this case along, but his truck's pretty big, and he wanted the full 18-foot projection of his carport, which I believe would put us 15 feet from the front property line because his property line sets in, I'm sorry, it would, the property line sets in 15 feet from the actual street, Petersburg Avenue. Any questions?
Do we have any comments from the city on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, for the record. My name is Philip Scares. I'm a principal planner with the Community Economic Development. So just want to touch on what the applicant was stating as far as the setbacks that's proposed. The applicant is proposing a carport 16 feet out from the front of the house with a two-foot overhang, which would put the structure, in a sense, three-and-a-half feet from the front property line. But we measure from the base of the structure, which is five feet, five-and-a-half feet. So this is a variance of nine feet. So I'll just run through some slides showing you the nature of the street. And there's a site plan of the proposed carport. Yes, okay, so this slide is in your packet. As you can see, the structure is extending approximately 18 foot from the house. The property line is 21 and a half feet from the house. So therefore, this carport, it's encroaching into the front setback by nine-and-a-half feet. And if we go to the next slide, please. You can see this is the house in question, and the vehicle's there. Next slide. Thank you. It's another shot of the street. Next slide. Yeah, and just looking down or up Petersburg Avenue, there are no front carports extending into the, into the front yard there. Like Mr. Johnson said, they're all on the side of the street. So you can see some examples here of a carport that's, you know, integrated into the house and not sticking out. Early on in the process, you know, we reached out to the applicant to see if they could scale down this request. We thought that three-and-a-half feet for the structure overall was a little bit too excessive. So, you know, and we also asked if there were any medical conditions that may require this, that may, you know, may necessitate the need for this request. But the applicant doesn't have any other than, you know, his age, which, you know, not necessarily in and of itself, but there's no actual ADA disability in this case. Next slide, please. Okay. Kristel, you can go back to the site plan. Thank you. Appreciate it. So we've, in our staff report, we've noted that the, the board has heard many variances in the past regarding front carports. Most of them were after the fact that the applicant has come in and seek variances after the carport has been constructed. Constructed, excuse me. This is not the case. The applicant was going the right way here. But most of the variances that we've done over the last few years have been denied by the board. And they were all denied due to the lack of a clear hardship, which staff finds in this place is really no clear hardship. And with these facts, approval of this request would set a precedent and open the door to similar variance requests, possibly in this neighborhood and on this street. Therefore, staff doesn't recommend approval of this request as proposed. We do recommend denial.
Mr. Cersei?
Yes.
This is Mr. Hirsch. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there an existing carport to this house on Petersburg now? And he wants to add another one out? Or why doesn't he just build it on the side if there's no existing carport?
When you, there's no carport on the house now. There is kind of a makeshift carport on the side of the house, which I didn't get a picture of. I'm not sure if it's a, code case, but it's a detached kind of makeshift carport on the side of the house. But they have the option to do it in the rear yard. On the sides, there's just not enough room to meet the setback requirements at five feet from the side yard if it was attached.
So if he took down the, if he took down the part to the left there that's away from the house, he could build a carport on the side then, couldn't he?
It's pop. I'm not sure he's gonna have enough room on that side yard.
I see. Okay.
Madam Chair, Matt Lyons has his hand raised.
Yes, Kristel, can you go back to the previous slide showing the overall site plan? Before that. Next slide. I think it was up to the other side. I'm sorry. Are we missing it? The overall site plan? I thought we had it in here.
It's, sorry, man, it's in the packet. I didn't have it in the slideshow because it didn't show the, it only showed the property lines, and it didn't show the...
Basically, if you look at the sketch from the property praiser, if you see, if you notice in the front of the truck, there's an area that's enclosed, there's an awning and a couple windows. The property praiser identified, said it's a finished enclosed porch 18 feet wide. That likely was the original carport when the house was built. And a previous owner enclosed that, converted that to a living area. So at one time, it appears there was a carport, but it was enclosed in there. And there may be room on the side for a smaller carport, but we do not recommend, for the reasons that Mr. Stares presented, that we grant variance in the front to the precedent that we established.
This is Kristen. And looking at the photo that's up right now and the extension of where the carport would be, it would look like the individual would still be walking outside to go to the front door. Did I miss something, or is that all gonna be covered?
No, ma'am, you're correct. There's a, there's a little door on the side there. You can't really see it in the little alcove under the patio. So they won't have to walk quite as far. But, yeah, you may have to go outside.
So they'd be stepping over the flower bed to get in that side door, though?
Yes, ma'am.
So it, I mean, to me, it sounds like it's more a cover for the truck than the individual that's trying to make their way to and from the front door.
And in that slide, you can see there's a little white canopy on the right-hand side of the screen. That's they have a little makeshift carport on that side yard.
Good, board members, just reminding, please raise your hand to be recognized by Ms. Kanishi as the chairperson.
Jonathan, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All I see is the picture that you're putting up. So how would you know if my hand was raised if we're not back to the picture of the board members?
Yes, sir. I can see you. I can see you on your webcam.
You can see me, and I can't see you all?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No problem. Madam Chair?
Well, and when, Mr. Johnson, when you were working with the applicant, he was unwilling to go with a shorter carport or make arrangements to move it on the side or anything. go with a shorter carport or make arrangements to move it on the side or anything. It was just, this is, this is all he wanted.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, please unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just replying to the question. Uh, no one approached by the planner, uh, to ask if he would be willing to decrease the size. He did not want to, so move forward as you see fit, guys.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, any other questions from the board or do we have any objections from the, the public?
I received no comments from, uh, from any neighboring property owners.
And Madam Chair, there is no, no calls currently from the public. I'd like to remind the public on the broadcast that for any of these items, if you wish to speak, um, you can dial in using the number that is the graphic on the screen with the access code. Um, and please just wait, hold until you are recognized. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, board, do you have any more comments?
Uh, Madam Chair, Mr. Culberson has his hand raised.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes, I make a motion to deny the, uh, proposal.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, Ms. Carlson, do you agree?
Can you say that again, Ms. Carlson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, I would agree to deny. I didn't, I didn't hear it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Raskey? Mr. Raskey, do you agree to deny this?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
And Ms. Kanishi, I also agree. So unfortunately, um, this has not been approved. So thank you very much. So moving on to the next applicant. We have, uh, is this Michael Demarque?
Uh, yes, Michael Demarsee.
Demarsee, apologize. Um, Mr. Demarsee?
Do we swear in first?
Ramona, you're muted.
Good morning, Miss, Mr. Demarque. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ramona. Um, this next request is for a forty-five foot variance to allow a maximum setback seventy-five feet from Lakeland Hills Boulevard in lieu of the thirty-foot maximum setback specified by table three point four dash two of the Land Development Code for development located within an urban corridor, contact sub-district in order to construct a new multi-tenant retail development on properly, property located at forty-one seventy-five Lakeland Hills Boulevard. Can you, Mr. Demarsee, can you please give us some little bit more background and some information on your, your application?
Uh, sure. Good morning to everyone and, and thank you to members of the board and staff for holding this hearing. Uh, we own this vacant, uh, parcel of land along Lakeland Hills Boulevard, just north of the Lakeland Regional Cancer Center. And we're looking to develop a, a new commercial retail strip center. It's the third parcel of a master plan development that began back in two thousand nine. We developed the Arbor Oaks Assisted Living Facility and the Arbor Hills Independent Living Facility next door, and we still own and operate those communities. Um, I have my civil engineer, Matthew Campu, uh, Campo on the phone as well. Um, and I'd like to turn it over to him to discuss the site in more detail. Matt?
Uh, yes, I'm here. I, uh, I guess I need to be sworn first.
Yes, Ramona, just unmute your mic.
If, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, just have a quick question for staff. So what, in the application process, we submitted some justification, but more importantly, it had some graphics in it. Um, just wanted to confirm if the board members were able to receive those, because I think this would be helpful if they did. Um, or if there's ability to put it on the screen. If not, then I could just talk through it.
Kristal, could you please go to the, uh, site plan in the slideshow, please?
Actually, that's probably good right there, that aerial for right now, if we could leave it on that. Okay. Great, thanks. Um, as Michael's mentioning, um, this particular property, that the portion of this property is the northernmost portion. This particular property, uh, back in two thousand nine, when they purchased this land, was zoned commercial, um, or had for, for commercial, uh, Euclidean commercial, I forget. And, uh, as a city rezoning initiative, this area was rezoned, I believe, to a, um, form-based zoning that changed the criteria and it changed the setbacks to where it's a thirty-foot maximum. Um, Michael and his group, actually at that time, they don't have any record of receiving a letter, so we found out about it when we had done, um, took the site plan for the commercial partial reference, went and met with staff through a concept plan review, and that's when it came up. So we were surprised by that. Had further meetings with staff, which led to this, uh, variance request. The, um, the particular parcel is, uh, butts the interstate, um, the IAC, so the Interstate Activity Center. Immediately across the street, the east or to the left of this image, is a, um, Harley-Davidson shop. And then, uh, north of that is a, um, put up my little arrow here. North of that is additional activities such as a Waffle House. Immediately north of the parcel is a Marathon Gas Station and car dealerships and uses like that. So the, um, the actual activity centers, activities are literally directly across the street. So this parcel, as it's zoned, is set up to be more urban. Um, it has the intent of having the buildings on the street corners, sidewalks in the front, with the concept that people are gonna be walking by and walking in the front door. And, um, so with the, the nature of the parcel, that's, and I believe staff, uh, does support what we're requesting, that it really doesn't fit that type of atmosphere. So the intent here is to, um, to request what we've done, which is a seventy-five foot setback over the thirty and have a little bit more of a traditional layout where we have parking in front and the, uh, the buildings further back. Within our justification that we provided, you know, there's a variety of other aspects, which is this site has a, a handful of wetlands on it that make the geometry very unique. And, uh, also efforts to save trees by putting the buildings further back. It gives us more flexibility to work around the streets. So in, in a, without getting into the justification portion, um, that's a summary of what we're proposing.
Okay, um, comments from the city?
Yes, good morning. Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. Uh, as you can see here, we have a five-point-three-two acre sized property. Uh, again, it, it is vacant, uh, except for a cell tower, that is a hundred and sixty-foot cell tower that was approved several years ago. Um, the, the, the subject property is, uh, located directly adjacent to the intersection of North Porter Avenue and Lakeland Hills Boulevard. Uh, this is an arterial corridor that connects the downtown area, uh, to SoCo Loop Road North and, uh, State Road Thirty-three there, further to the north, as well as, uh, platform. While this segment of the corridor is technically within the urban corridor context district, it functions more like a suburban corridor as it contains an assortment of, uh, as the, as the applicant mentioned, uh, auto dealerships. Uh, there's an assisted living facility directly to the south. Uh, there's restaurants, uh, a convenience store directly to the north. There's a large mobile home park. And then further to the north, you have low-density, single-family, multifamily residential. Um, Kristal, could you go to one of the maps? There, there should be a context district map. There you go. Thank you. So again, as you can see, uh, directly to the north there, uh, it is suburban corridor. Uh, this would have been, uh, these urban form context districts would have been included, uh, with the adoption of the new land development code in December of two thousand thirteen. Again, this variance is needed in order to accommodate them as it relates to the design, uh, for the site. Uh, it is a seventy-five foot setback that they require, uh, for the proposed, uh, retail strip center. Uh, we have not received any emails or phone calls regarding this request. And staff recommends approval. Uh, we don't believe that the relief requested, um, is an issue. It's the minimum necessary to accommodate them. And, uh, again, with that, we recommend approval and we'll stay for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Um, do we have, has, has there been any calls this morning, um, for comments on this property?
I don't see any. Madam Chair, um, Matt Lyons did have his hand raised.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to add that the, um, the property, um, does have a feature land use designation of IAC Interchange Activity Center. It's a, um, special, um, lead use category that was created to address the, um, unique opportunity of use conditions associated with development at limited access highway interchanges. Uh, generally, the uses of those limited changes are motor vehicle oriented, um, designed to cater to regional travelers, uh, things such as, uh, gas stations, convenience stores, lodging and dining establishments. So, uh, the land use, uh, does support the justification for the variance. Um, it's not really your more urban type, type land use and, and we, it just had, um, a mismatch when, when the mapping was done throughout the context there and likely suburban corridor would be more appropriate. So we are supporting the, um, the variance estimate as of that.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Um, do we have any comments or questions from the board?
Uh, Madam Chair, Ms. Carlson, raise your hand.
I move approval. I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, so, um, let's go ahead and vote. Um, Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Raskey? Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
And Ms. Kanishi, yes. So it is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good day.
So next up, we have item number nine. This is for, the request is by the applicant is Brenda S. Corbin. Um, this is a request for a nine-point-five foot variance to allow a rear yard setback of five-point-five feet in lieu of a fifteen-foot minimum setback specified by the PUD zoning for Sandpiper Golf and Country Club, ordinance number three-five-six-three, as amended, and a three-point-three percent variance to allow a maximum lot coverage of thirty-eight-point-three percent in lieu of the thirty-five percent maximum specified by the table three point four dash five of the Land Development Code to allow for the construction of a new hard roof screen room addition on property located at fifty-eight seventy-eight McCaw Place. Um, is Ms. Corbin here?
Yes, Madam Chair, she is here. Let me go ahead and unmute her.
Good morning, Ms. Good morning, Ms. Corbin. If I could go ahead and swear you in?
Okay.
Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please go ahead and, um, give us a, a brief overview of what your application is for?
Sure. Um, okay, here on our, uh, property, we purchased this house a year ago in April, so we've been here a little over a year. We have a patio on the rear of our house, a concrete slab, um, which is nice area. Um, the problem is that the sun is on the patio pretty much the whole day. And, um, in Florida, as you know, the sun's very hot. And at night, or even during the day, the bugs also are a problem. So with these two things, we unfortunately don't get to use the patio, but we would like an area so we could still, you know, enjoy the outdoors. Since we moved to Florida from Ohio, uh, we, we like the outdoors and would like to spend more time, just, uh, that we don't get the opportunity because of the, uh, the problems. Um, like I said, there is a patio there already, um, and we would just be putting a screen room with a hard insulated roof, um, over that area. Can you still hear me?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. Do we have, um, the city, comments from the city?
Hi, good morning again. For the record, Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. The applicant's lot is a seven thousand eight hundred and forty square foot corner lot. Uh, there's an existing two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two square foot single-family home that was built in nineteen ninety-three. Uh, the, again, the, the purpose of this request is to obtain relief for a proposed, uh, sunroom or, uh, hard roof screen room. As the applicant stated, uh, there is an issue with regards to the setback, uh, in the rear yard. Uh, this is a common issue, as many of you are aware, within Sandpiper. Um, unfortunately, the lots in the subdivision are, are rather shallow in terms of their depth, and it, it's not uncommon for variance to be required, uh, prior to, uh, getting approval for that building permit that they need to construct this. At this time, uh, if, if you, Kristal, if you could please go to the site plan? Thank you. Um, the house is, uh, approximately, uh, fourteen-point-eight feet from the rear property line. Uh, if this were to be approved, when the sunroom is constructed, it would be five, uh, point five feet from the rear property line. The applicant has received approval already, uh, from the Sandpiper Golf and Country Club's Architecture Review Committee, uh, a copy that was uploaded to the file. Uh, this hardship suffered is not the result of any action taken by the applicant. Uh, the owners wish to have a place, as, as she mentioned earlier, to, uh, get, be in the shade and, um, free from bugs, uh, which is, which can be accomplished with this hard roof screen room. Uh, as such, the requested relief is reasonable proportioned to the degree of hardship suffered by the applicant. Uh, the amount of relief requested is, uh, minimal amount necessary to accommodate them. Um, there aren't really any other alternatives, so we do recommend approval of this, and I will add that we have not received any emails, uh, or phone calls regarding this request. And with that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um, and Jonathan, can you confirm there's nobody that's called in for this?
Um, no, there are no callers currently.
All right. Are there any questions from the board?
I see Mr. Culberson's hand raised. Madam Chair?
Culberson?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is, uh, not dissimilar to previous requests we've examined, uh, uh, in prior meetings. Uh, so I would make a, a motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you. We have, um, we have a motion and a second. Um, let's go ahead and vote for this. Uh, Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Raskey?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
And Ms. Kanishi, yes. So this has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on. This is item number ten, um, forty-three eleven Shift Court. This is a request for eleven-foot variance to allow a rear yard setback of four feet in lieu of the fifteen-foot minimum setback specified by table three point four dash eleven of the Land Development Code in order to in order to construct a new screen room with a hard roof on property located at 4311 Shipport.
And Mr. Johnson's already been sworn in, so he doesn't need to be sworn in again.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
This variance is to allow for a screen room in the rear of her property. There are a lot of these attached townhomes, I believe they are, that have screen rooms surrounding her. In fact, there's one directly behind her. I don't know that they were permitted, but we're going to permit it. So it's a small screen room, a small existing slab, as I'm sure they'll show you in the slide. I can't remember the exact size of the room, but it's like 14 by 6, I think. And the slide you see here, directly across from that patio door, the slider door, there's a room exactly like what she wants to build there, and that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm assuming we don't have any people calling in from the audience on this one?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, comments from the city?
Hi, excuse me. Good morning again. Philip Scares with Community Economic Development. We'll just continue with the slides. Again, this is a, it's a townhouse development of the Village of Lake Highlands subdivision. It's a 55 by 71-foot deep lot, a single-family attached. Here's the site plan. This is a corner lot, so there's a little bit more lot here. But as you can see, the 6 by 14 concrete patio that's already existing is approximately four feet from the property line. And there are other patios in this development as well, just along the rear there. Crystal, if you can go back a couple of slides. I don't know if you can see it very well, but there are other... Yeah, in this slide, yeah, just exactly right here, you can tell that there are other rear patios in this development, especially right across from, to the rear of the applicant. The zoning is MF12, which requires a 15-foot rear yard setback. And so they're requesting a variance from table 3.411 from the single-family attached standards. Excuse me here. So it's an 11-foot variance for 15 to allow a four-foot rear yard setback. We've recently had a variance at 4309. Excuse me, we recently had a variance on the other side of this, on a previous cul-de-sac, which was approved on the corner lot, the same situation here. And staff does recommend approval. The degree of hardship suffered by the applicant is minimal and necessary to accommodate this proposed screen enclosure. Due to lack of any viable alternatives, staff find this variance will not be injurious to adjacent property owners or contrary to public interests, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Yes, I remember we just did approve one just like this. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I move that we approve the construction.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. We'll put this to a vote. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Raskey?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
And Ms. Konishi, yes. So thank you. This one is also approved.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you. You as well. Moving right along. Item number 11. This is 1916 Pawnee Trail. This is a request for a 1.8-foot variance to allow an interior side yard setback of 5.2 feet for an existing family home located on Lot 3 in lieu of the 7-foot minimum setback specified by table 3.4-1 of the Land Development Code in order to split the parcel and allow for the development of a new single-family home on Lot 2 on the property located at 1916 Pawnee Trail. So who do we have speaking on behalf?
Madam Chair, I have Donna Kachadurian.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Kachadurian. If I could go ahead and swear you in? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kachadurian. Can you go ahead and give us a little bit of information about your request?
Yes, I'm just requesting a variance in order to split the property back to the original plotted lot lines for Lot 2 and 3.
All right, thank you. City, do you have comments from the city?
Good morning again. Todd Vargo with the Community Economic Development Division. This property is located in the Beacon Hill Historic District. It is lots 2 and 3 of Block 5 Beacon Hill subdivision. Lot 3 on the north there has a single-family detached home. Their request is to give a variance to that single-family home because it sits a little bit closer to the property line, the new property line, which will be that brownish reddish line there than it should for the zoning district. The zoning district requires seven feet of side setback, and the house sits approximately 5.2 feet from that side property line. The new lot that will be created is on the south side there. It's Lot 2. Next slide, please. There's the house. That white truck sits on Lot 2, which will be split off. Next slide, please. This is kind of the same picture, but a little bit closer in. You can see... I'm guessing that blue flag is probably the property line, although, you know, they've sodded over a little bit further. Again, the setback in the RA1 district is seven feet. This will sit, the house sits 5.2 feet from the line. So when the new house is constructed on Lot 2, there will be approximately 12 feet or 12.2 feet between the buildings, so the minimum horizontal separation distance by the Florida Building Code is 10 feet, so we'll exceed that, that safety regulation. Next slide, please. Here is the survey of Lot 3. Next slide, please. Here is the survey for Lot 2, the Lincoln Lot that will be split off. So we do recommend approval because the amount of relief requested is the minimal amount necessary to allow the applicant to split the property and to create a new buildable lot, Lot 2, which you see here. Approval of this request would not be contrary to the public interest, as it would have no impact on adjacent property owners. Due to the lack of viable alternatives and the minimal impact on adjacent properties, we recommend this for approval. I believe we heard one of these recently, maybe at the last meeting in March. If not, it might have been in February. There was a similar variance requested so somebody could split off a lot to build a new house. We have not received any communication from anybody in the neighborhood, but I'll stand for any questions.
I'll mute myself. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that want to speak?
There are no callers at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I move for approval.
A second.
All right, thank you. Motion and a second. We can go ahead and vote on this. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Raskey?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
And Ms. Konishi, yes. So this has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12. This is for property located at 6032 Swallow Drive. The request is for a 7-foot variance to allow a rear yard setback of eight feet in lieu of the 15-foot minimum setback specified by the PUD zoning for Sandpiper Golf and Country Club, ordinance 3563, as amended, and a 2.5-foot variant, I'm sorry, a 2.5% variance to allow a maximum lot coverage of 37.5% in lieu of the 35% maximum specified by table 3.4-5 of the Land Development Code to allow for the installation of a hard roof of an existing 12 by 12 patio screen enclosure on property located at 6032 Swallow Drive. And who is here to represent this property?
We have Gary and Kathy Hamill.
Thank you.
Gary and Kathy, can you hear?
Yes, I'm here. This is Kathy.
Hi there. If I can go ahead and swear you in, do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you give us a little bit of background on your request?
Yes, our request is we currently have a screen room, and as you heard from the other Sandpiper resident, we like to get out and enjoy the outdoors. So we're requesting to have the roof, it's an insulated hard roof, no maintenance, so that we can enjoy our screen room more often.
All right, thank you. And comments from the city?
Good morning again. For the record, Todd Vargo with the Community Economic Development Division. You can see on the slide here, this property is part of the Sandpiper. It backs onto the golf course. Next slide, please. You can see on the rear of the house, they have an existing, I believe it's a 12 by 12 or 12 by 10 screen foot or screen room, and they're requesting to put a hard roof on that. So when that happens, screen rooms with screen roofs are considered accessory structures and have to meet a different setback. When you cover that screen room with a hard roof, it becomes part of the principal structure, and the setback is greater. So in changing from the screen roof to a hard roof, they end up needing a variance. The existing screen room is set back approximately eight feet from the rear property line. As such, this variance request is for seven feet of relief. We've had some of these before where people are actually asking for 10 feet of relief because their lots are a little bit narrower. The lots in Sandpiper are not quite as deep as most lots in the city. Again, the subject, you can see the subject property abuts the Sandpiper Golf Course to the rear, so there really are no impacts on adjacent properties. The screen room is already there. They're really just changing the material the roof is made out of. The next slide, please. Here's the, here's the site plan that was submitted in yellow, outlined in yellow is the screen room, because it's about 12 by 12, and it sits about eight feet from the property line. Next slide, please. And with their application, they also submitted proof that the Sandpiper Golf and Country Club Architectural Committee has voted in support of their request. You can see the approval letter there on the slide. So this is very similar to the one we just heard a couple of cases ago. The hardship's not the result of any action taken by the applicant. We do have a precedent established in Sandpiper where variances like this have been granted when the property abuts the, abuts the golf course to the rear. As such, the requested relief would not be contrary to the public interest. The amount of relief requested is the minimal amount necessary to accommodate the hard roof screen room. And again, based on the lack of viable alternatives, the minimal impact on adjacent properties, and really the cosmetic nature of the request, we recommend approval of this variance.
All right, thank you. Do we have any requests from the public?
No, Madam Chair, no callers at this time.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Raskey has his hand raised. Madam Chair?
I would make a motion for approval.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and put this to a vote. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Culberson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Raskey?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
And Ms. Konishi, yes. So it has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have any unfinished business for today?
Um, Brandy?
Not really unfinished business, but this is Ms. Carlson's last meeting with us. She has been on the board, excuse me, been on the board for, I believe, almost three years, and her term is up on 5/31. She is, she's going to leave us, so we're going to have to fill her spot. But we wanted to say thank you so much for being with us and spending your time with us and helping us with the city request from the city.
And I would like to thank the board. I've enjoyed my service and the staff. You guys have been great. And I will miss all of you, but maybe I can watch you on television.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. We're going to miss you.
Well, I think, you know, I believe in, I mean, I think we need both a combination of people that have institutional memory, and I know I've talked to some people who are interested in service on this board. And I, you know, I think that's important, that we get new faces, and everybody that comes in does a great job, and the staff makes it all easy for us. And I'm sorry I'm leaving now that we have this new format.
Hopefully, it's not a permanent format.
No, that's correct.
Thank you so much.
Like then a talent. All right, do we have any new business? Right, then I guess we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of this today. It was, you guys made it so much easier.
Thank you. You did a great job, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Sorry if you could hear my dog barking in the background. They were kind of...